Engagement, domain two is staff development and growth. Domain three is building that school culture and community. And that domain four is having responsible steward and fiscal responsibilities and resources in your building. And so those are the guidelines or the evaluation tools. And an evaluation is not just an end of the year measure. It is something that you are constantly looking at and working at. And everything is aligned. So you're, the academic action plan, the district strategic plan, the schools' school improvement plan, and the evaluation systems are all in line. And the district actually, the district act strategic plan has actually taken even further steps to ensure that that happens. So for example, on the teacher appraisal process, that rubric, they don't just have that rubric language anymore with those different rankings and areas, but they've added, what are those critical attributes for a basic teacher, a proficient teacher? What are those different resources? What are those different examples of what you're going to actually see in the classroom? And then how is that research tied? And so making sure that all of those different systems are aligned and that evaluation piece and that school improvement process piece is a living, breathing document.
At what point, you know, we're looking at turnaround schools and for those, if that's one of the ways that you go for turnaround, that's changing of school leaders. At what point are you looking at a persistently failing school that has failed for many, many years under No Child Left Behind and has not seen as much growth? Are we saying we're going to change over school leadership and then identify, you know, somebody that is more poised to be in this position to turn around schools?
And I think that's a, that's a pretty loaded question. I think that you take into a lot, a lot of different things into consideration. You have to take a look at what do we currently have in place with the district? You also have to take a look at those states and federal sanctions and different things like that.
And I would like to add that. We have to look at what we label a failing school. If you click on the NDE, Miller Park Elementary School that you gave praise to tonight is still considered a failing school. My own aunt called me and said, when it came out in the paper, "I thought you did a good job. You're leading, you're, you're a failing school." And we now have a system in place with the executive directors where we are now present in schools and seeing what is happening. And I spent six hours of my time today, we all do, spending time walking alongside principals. And to me, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over. And now that you have, all of us, the four of us are very experienced and very successful principals that are in the buildings and we know what it takes. Our principals are working very hard. I, I don't know a principal that I'm working with probably that all of us are not working with that are not committed to the work. And it's not just about leadership and it's not just about the work of the teachers. It's about planning, preparation, and implementation. And it takes time. We have a process in place now where we're recognizing schools. It's the conversation of celebrating that growth and it ties back to looking at data, aligning professional development. And we have now just gotten comfortable where we've built relationships with principals and they're opening up and sharing the challenges and obstacles that they face. And through our conversation and work, we're able to align professional development that's supporting the needs of the, of the school community. And so I, I think, and I asked this, this board that you look at, what is a failing school? You look at, then you can say, what is a failing community? I was in a school today, working with the principal who doesn't have a high Burmese or refugee population. Two days ago, a young man arrived in her school that was new from another country and she is working with the ESL department. Is that child going to pass the state test next year? Probably not. But is that child going to be in a school where they're safe and they're learning and they're acclimating? So I understand accountability is greater than it ever is, but nobody feels it more than the schools, the principals and the teachers. And I can tell you that the plan is, we're working the plan. We're walking alongside the principals every single day. There isn't one of us that doesn't spend over 50% of our time working in schools. And you can't solve or align strategic support if you don't know what's going on. It's going to take time. And, and we're, we have a roadmap, that district action plan to increase student achievement, it's there. Procedures and routines. Your data, your data drives your instruction, your literacy strategies across all content areas. And then the professional development that comes with that is supporting the plan. And if you pull, if you pull principals out, I firmly believe that the problem isn't the staff, the problem is our society. And it's not just an OPS issue, it's an epidemic in this country with the lack of social services. And we're getting there. We're getting there. We have a board, we have a bond that is passed, and we have people that are committed to the work. And that includes the staff, the teachers, the principal, and we have the community members that are along to support. And, and we're in there every day, working alongside them and developing plans.
Thank you, Lisa. At this time, is there anybody else that has questions? Okay, Mr. Scanlon and then Mr. Snow, and we'll go maybe five more minutes on this and then we're going to take a five-minute break and get to action items.
I would just like to thank everybody that is helping create this culture shift within OPS. I know you guys have been under a lot of stress. There's a lot of pressure on everybody. I think the realignment of, of putting more services back into the schools, of developing the educational direct, or the executive directors to help maximize the effectiveness of the principals and the building, staff. I, I commend you guys all for, for doing that in a short time. I know it's, it's only been, I think, less than a year that this has been going on. And it's really hard to gain data as you're implementing something. And I really appreciate everything that you guys are all doing and the input and the responses that I've been getting back have been very positive that OPS is moving in a very positive way. And I'd just like to applaud you all. I know that a lot has been asked of you guys. And I just would ask that fellow board members show some patience as we gain that data and we see the results of a, of a new organizational shift in climate change. So I'd just like to personally thank all of you for the hard work that you're putting in.
Thank you, I think I'm next. So I don't, I'm not going to go too much into this, but thank you guys for presenting and everything like that. It's, it's amazing that you guys are still here and you're probably going to be at your schools at six o'clock in the morning, getting ready for kids. But we do this gig every couple of weeks. I just had a couple of questions actually directed towards Dr. Kierbacher research. Is there a way that we can get these NISA scores broken down by demographics?
Yes, and I think you have it as a receipt of report you would have gotten earlier this fall, but we'll send it to you directly.
Okay, thank you. And then on top of that, you said that in the action plan, you have every school how they're implementing that action plan? Is there a way that you could send that to the board? Is that in that receipt of reports too, or is that not?
It is not. And that's an internal audit we did to provide to our executive directors to support them in their work. But we certainly can talk with Mr. Evans and others and provide that on.
And the reason why I ask that is because every school's different. And if you have a little, what was it, 30-some schools with the silver and gold awards that come up and present, there are schools that aren't getting that. So is that action plan actually working for every school directly? And I want to know when, you know, you bring up, and it's good, we bring up the good ones, but the ones that are really struggling with that action plan. I want to know why they're struggling and what we can do as a board to better help assist you and them out there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. That would be terrific. It's always depth of implementation. In case you're wondering which schools are working and which ones aren't there yet, it's whether or not they've had the ability to do deep implementation consistently. Think of it as dosage. The more you do something deeply on a regular basis, the higher your return or yield. If you only look at data every quarter, you don't get the same result as if you looked at it weekly.
I agree. And back on dosage, if you give too much dosage, you kind of hurt it.
A different problem. Well said.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, with that, what we're going to do is, there are still, I think, probably some more questions, but we're going to have school improvement grant, which is J2C, which is an action item, and I think probably could cover any more questions under that. So at this time, I want to say thank you to all of you who came and have been here with us this evening. We appreciate it very much. We're going to take a five-minute break, give people a chance to check their cell phones and take a little break here, and then we're going to hit the action items. So we will be back at 9:50.
I tried to create that based on Tony's questions. I hope it wasn't too long. The principals all added their own little bit.
Obviously, this is a problem. Because to me, this is just a problem. You probably should get a little more, like, separate web chat.
Okay, okay.
Just like we did with the bond.
Hey, I got everything.
Thank you.
So right now, I have a recommendation.
They're at 90%.
I tried, the tip's up.
That's the way the, so that's the sad part. It's what we really need to do, our focus.
Right.
How we got 265 pulling out of the state, that's practice.
We have 1,015, and then go to the schools all over the country, and the right thing to provide the resources and the support.
Tina, thank you.
Guys, awesome.
I just want to let you know, is this really a recommendation?
Thank you for helping me to protect the vote.
Sure.
Nice to do it.
But I just never know when I get up here, I'm like, to get it started.
And I don't really know what I place her, but certainly what you guys are doing is good.
And school improvement isn't a place.
It's hard, it never goes away, you never get there.
Well, I'll watch you on TV.
That's really sad.
I'll watch you on TV.
You're sad if, if you do that. I would be disappointed.
And we do.
Be disappointed.
If Dr. Poole watches on TV.
Well, doing a lot of good work, and you say your, your group of students has a lot of challenges, they have a lot of behaviors and risk situations, but you, they can just come to school and they, and you better do it best.
And I actually appreciate you staying with us and if we're too, but.
Absolutely.
Keep up the good work.
I suppose I'm supposed to say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
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 A lot of those are in there, and I'm going to touch on a few of the others. And then there's, there are, by my count, five bills dealing with the learning community, everything from elimination of the learning community out, opt-out, school districts have authority to opt out, removal of the common levy, a host of changes that leave common levy, another one that, host of changes that leaves common levy intact, but makes some changes out of that superintendent's plan. So, there's a, there's a broad range of things. And I would tell you, those kind of, what I foresee is on both of those major issues, most of that's going to go into, after they have hearings, most of it's going to go into kind of a melting pot, and the question will be what comes out of that. And, and the goal will be, our goal would be that whatever this board's priorities are in those two major areas, to hopefully have it reflect those priorities. So, with that, I actually don't have that document in my, in my book, but the, I don't know if you want me, looking at the time, Madam President, I don't know if you want me to go through all of each of the bills, or if there's questions about those that are on that document that you have.
Well, I think there's two things that have to happen. We'll, we'll need to take board action to either accept the recommendations from the committee as they're printed here in, as far as bills that we've, are recommending we support or oppose. So, we can do it however Mrs. Gadding wants to do, and then we'll need to take board action on the two broad position statements that Mr. Lindsay referenced. One regarding basic positions over bills pertaining to TOSA, and the other broad principle statements over bills that would have to do with the learning community. So...
Well, I would, I, I think-
There's potentially three action items there.
Right, three or four. And so I think the one thing is you all have had this on your agenda to look at. So, I would say if you have specific questions about any of these particular bills, then let's look to Mr. Lindsay on those items, and then, or questions on why the Legislative Committee is making recommendations one way or the other. So I guess I would open it up at this time, two questions to Mr. Lindsay, because we're really in the beginning of this whole phase, and so we kind of just took some initial sweeps through this ourselves, but it's been on the agenda, so.
And Mrs. Gadding, if I could add, the, the intent, I think, of the committee was that the package, that this was presented as a package of recommendations. To the extent that somebody wanted to pull them off and talk about them one by one, we could do that. But if everybody was generally comfortable with the whole package, that you could just, what is the third part of the agenda item could just be approved under a single motion. You know, discussion approved under a single motion, and you wouldn't have to cover every single bill individually.
Correct.
And if that works, then that would be the process that the committee would follow going forward with new recommendations to the board.
So, does anybody have any questions or comments about any particular one? Mr. Scanlon?
I guess I'd just like some information on the LB-66. The recommendation is to oppose it, and I was just looking to find out more information on that, and why the recommendation was to oppose.
The, the hearing on that bill was to, was actually this afternoon. The, that's part of, we talked about this the last couple of years, the problem with the beginning of a session is that they start scheduling bills pretty quickly. And so, we will have these, some of these come up these first couple of weeks, where the board may not have a position on it yet. That particularly, and so we, there was no testimony. We haven't worked that bill at all yet, simply because this board has not taken a position. But the, the board, but the bill itself deals with bonding, and would put additional requirements into, that must be disclosed in the circular or in the prospectus for the bonds of all public entities. That additional information would include things such as unfunded pension liabilities, what portions of tax base, general or revenue, depending on what general revenue band, on what portion has been pledged to, to bonds, that kind of information. This goes above and beyond what might be required by the SEC. This is what would be required at the state level. One of the issues with that, if that information is not correct, and, and someone loses money over it based on that information not being correct, it would provide that board members would be personally, of the entity would be personally liable for those losses.
I believe we also had, since we're the only school district that has its own retirement system, that unfunded liability provision of the bill that would really only apply to us, or the discussion was, would it then, would a district in the state have to list the entire unfunded liability for all of Npers, just looking at how it would affect other school districts, or would they be able to actually break it down to the portion of that that was applicable to that particular school district? So, it seemed to have a lot of messy pieces.
I would, I would indicate as bond counsel, put my bond counsel hat on, even though I'm not a bond lawyer, having conversed with our bond lawyers, the thought was that this actually may create more problems for us with our SEC reporting, because of the inconsistencies between what's expected of us, and off, in our creation of our, of our initial statement that we submit to the rating agencies and to the SEC, and with the anticipation of several additional tranches of bonds in the coming years, we, we just don't think that this is a prudent step on the part of the state. It doesn't just apply to schools, it does apply to other political subdivisions, cities, and others, and I think we anticipate that most of them will, will feel the same way that, that the committee's recommending.
And if I might, one, one more piece to it. It creates a separate cause of action under the Political Subdivision Tort Claims Act, which currently does not exist. So, there's another way, not only can you, through that SEC process, receive, you know, some, if you're not properly reporting, there's penalties under that, but now you also have the Political Subdivision Tort Claims Act that you would have penalties under as well.
Mrs. Neelis Brash, unless there's other questions about that particular bill, I thought maybe you could talk about the bills you were asked to research, because we may want to take a position on those.
So, I believe the first one I recall was 103, LB-103, with regard to what does our school district currently do with regard to school-sponsored athletic activities? On those athletic activities, we wanted to know what is the current practice of Omaha Public Schools. So, we discussed that with several staff. I believe the NSAA requirements is 20 credit hours or more. Our internal requirement is 30, so you have to be enrolled with 30 credit hours or more. This would take it down to one credit hour, that you would be required to be enrolled, and then you would be able to participate in the extracurricular activity with regard to the district. So, this would significantly lower our current rate or, or credit hour application process that we have for students that would be homeschooled or the like. We currently require those 30 hours, and now it would just require one credit hour.
Hearing on that was today as well, right?
No, the hearing on that bill, on 103, was yesterday. The testimony and opposition came from the NSAA Executive Director, testified, and laid out what some of the complications of it were. Also mentions the, some of the issues about whether kids in AAU or Olympic training programs, or, or other of those entering for, enrolling for one credit hour, playing on traveling teams, but effectively playing for their high school team as well, those types of things. And the problem was that just the complications of what that would do. Did testify that, that the NSAA's policy is education first, and extracurriculars are an extension of that education. So, that bill has been heard, and there was opposition testimony to it.
Are there any other questions related to any of the other bills, positions? If not, I think we can entertain a motion on this particular set of recommendations. So, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
For the committee, I move that we accept the recommendations in the document Legislative Position Statements for just the bills that are on that document.
So, there's a motion on the table to move that we accept the Legislative Position Statements for the legislative bills that are on this document. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mrs. Fay, and a second by Ms. Williams. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Nine Aye.
Motion passes, and let's move to document number one, the TOSA piece. I guess the resolution on TOSA.
Members of the board, good afternoon, or good evening, I should say. Not quite good morning yet. You have, in front of you, a resolution relating to TOSA. Actually, it's broader than TOSA, it's related to state funding of education in general. It's a statement that's designed to outline certain principles that would guide our legislative team in Lincoln. In the, one of the things you've heard about, discussed throughout the last legislative session, and in anticipation of this one, is that on multiple occasions, we are called upon as a district to give an opinion or a quick analysis of legislation that's on the floor, being debated on the floor, over particularly like an issue like TOSA, we're going to talk in a moment about the learning community. And the thought was that by adopting a general statement of principles, that would help guide our advocacy team in Lincoln as they monitor and evaluate and negotiate with all of the various folks in Lincoln as they're debating legislation. And so, this first proposal focuses primarily on TOSA with certain key principles in it. Then, in addition to that, there is a statement related to funding for special education at the end of that. And, you know what, Matt, can we move that and put that up there? And then one item that's in here that has been the subject of some discussion, but not formally addressed by this board, but I know was raised during the visioning process by the state senators over the last summer, and discussed within this board related to the visioning process, is the concept that the state should consider getting into the support for equalization of facility renovation and construction, which is, of course, something that, as we're going forward with our bond project, would be of great interest and value to Omaha Public Schools. So, that's, the idea behind this is to provide some broad parameters in the area of state aid to education for our lobbying team.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, and then we can have discussion. So, is there a motion to accept the resolution on, I guess, TOSA and state aid?
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Scanlon.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fay. So, there's a motion by Mr. Scanlon, and a second by Mrs. Fay. Is there any discussion on the resolution for TOSA and state aid? Mr. Wayne?
Seventh line down, it reads, "The board supports a poverty allowance correction that is not punitive." If that statement stays in there, then currently, Ms., Senator Cook's bill is still considered punitive at 5%. So, we would be opposed to that, and then we'll probably come back and support that bill, but that bill probably will be attached to something else in a line item, which means that bill goes away, and then they come back with the statement right here, which we're opposed to reducing the punitive. So, I guess the only way I would support this, if that was taken out. Otherwise, as written before us, I cannot support, because even if it's 2%, which I thought the goal was to reduce to 50%, we would still be punitive in nature.
Is there other wording you would like to propose? Oh, well, Ms. America.
Oh, that was going to be exactly what I said. Like, if we could, one, correct the TOSA abbreviation the last two times, let me do it. But if we, because I agree, maybe if we changed it to say that is not excessively punitive, or, I would use the word draconian, but just in general on this, I think that this is a much more time-effective idea of passing a general statement from our board regarding TOSA, instead of us going through every single bill related to TOSA that will eventually probably get amended and ideas thrown into one Christmas tree, TOSA bill. So, yes.
Mrs. Fay.
Yeah, I thank you both for, both Ms. America's recommendation and Mr. Wayne pointing it out. And that's something that we need to be careful of as we adopt any legislative positions, that we don't paint ourselves into a corner in adopting a position that we oops didn't mean to, as it's applied to a bill that we oops really weren't supportive of. So, thank you both for pointing those out, and I would definitely be supportive of modifying that language, if Mr. Wayne is okay with the suggested language from Ms. America.
So, not excessively punitive, would that work?
Certainly beats 50%.
Mr. Scanlon?
I guess, just excessively punitive, I, I don't know what exactly that means, and what, what does that, I, what does that mean? I mean, are, are we looking to put a specific percentage on it, or just be more specific in that sense, because obviously some people have raised some concern, but saying that it's not excessively punitive, I personally don't understand where that line is.
Understood. So, any other suggestions on that? Mr. Wayne?
I would just suggest striking the line completely. I mean, we've already said above that we want additional funding for poverty, we want equalization across the board.
If, if I could interrupt at that point, I don't, removing that line, I don't think hinders this, because I would anticipate that we would have the opportunity, do we know when the hearing on that bill is scheduled, on Senator Cook's bill? So, so we would likely have opportunity to opine on that specific bill. I think draconian is, was our concern, and, and, yes, because 50% was, and we'd like to see it reduced, eliminated, but it may not be eliminated. But we'll have, give you an opportunity, if you want to take that line out, there would be an opportunity for the committee to consider what other proposals are there, and come back to this board with recommendation.
I move to strike the line, "The board supports a poverty alliance, allowance correction that is not punitive," from the TOSA statement that is before us.
Mrs. Fay, since you were the second on the previous motion, are you willing to accept the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's a motion for Mr. Scanlon, and a second for Mrs. Fay, to accept this wording with the strike of "The board supports a poverty allowance correction that is not punitive." Is there any other discussion?
And I believe that we, we can make the, the technical correction to make it sure that the, that the last two TOSAs are spelled correctly.
Oh, okay, yes. We want good spelling. Okay. So, if there's no other discussion on that item, Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Nine Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move to the resolution on learning community position. Mr. Kramer.
The, the presentation on this one is similar, the idea is to give authority. Frankly, after the extensive discussion that this board had with respect to the superintendent's proposals relating to the learning community, and the story that subsequently followed from that, created some confusion in the minds of the folks at the learning community, and within the legislature, about what our position was with respect to the learning community. The goal of this, once again, is to provide a broad, general statement that outlines key parameters of what our position is, without revisiting the previous positions taken by the board. And so, as you see, that, that's what this, this statement is designed to do. And so, it would be read in combination with the previous action by the board.
How about if we, are there any discussions related to this resolution?
Motion.
Okay. So, is there a motion for this resolution?
I move to approve the attached learning community position statement.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, there's a motion by Ms. William, Ms. Williams, on the learning community position statement, and there is a second by Mrs. Fay. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, seeing no discussion on that. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
No.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Eight Aye, one No.
Motion passes. We will move to legislative authority, which is item number four.
The last, well, I, I will say next to last, from an action item perspective, Mr. Lindsay and I would like to just share with you a couple of, after we're done with this one, a couple of information items related to bills that were submitted in the last two days related to OSERS. Just a little update. But this item goes back really to the heart of the question that has been discussed, I know, here on multiple occasions, within the last, with the last legislative session as well, about how Mr. Lindsay and, and his team are able to, how we want them to proceed as a board between meetings of the Legislative Committee and this, and this body, considering the recommendations of the Legislative Committee. And so, you have a resolution in front of you that authorizes the superintendent, acting in the best interest of the public schools, in consultation with both the board officers and the members of the Legislative Committee, to provide direction to Mr. Lindsay and his team on legislative issues that arise between meetings of the board. The expectation of this would be that if there's something that doesn't require action before a next board meeting, it would come through the Legislative Committee, and then ultimately be brought to this board for the board action. But in those instances, and frankly, and I would say in the next couple of months, there's not likely to be a lot of those kinds of things. But as we get to the end of the session, when things are going fast and furious down in Lincoln, there may be a greater need for this kind of flexibility. And so, the recommendation is that you provide this authority explicitly, so that everybody knows what the superintendent, well, first of all, Mr. Lindsay knows where his authority comes from, and the superintendent is aware who he needs to consult with before exercising that authority.
So, at this time, is there a motion to approve the attached statement regarding legislative authority?
I move to approve the attached statement regarding legislative authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, there's a motion on the table to approve the attached statement regarding legislative authority by Ms. Williams, and a second by Ms. America. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wayne?
Being that this is the first meeting that I'm not a board officer, and reading this again, this actually violates the Open Meetings Act as written before us. There are currently, previously, when I first read this, I was thinking about it as me being a board officer, but there are actually four people on the committee, and two board officers, and only one carryover. If he consults with everybody, that would be five people, and that would be a majority of the board's position.
That's a, that's a fair point, Mr.-
Yeah, no, there's no question. But this isn't saying that he has to consult with every member of the Legislative Committee. He has, we have a president of the Legislative Committee who could have some consultation and give advice to the president. We're not suggesting that the superintendent would be the one to talk to all five board members with respect to this.
I'd rather eliminate one of them, so it's a little clearer to the public that they're not talking. Mr. Evans isn't calling, or, I mean, if he talks to three of them, and then I call him, is he going to say, "I already talked to four, I can't talk to the fifth?" I mean, it'd be easier and cleaner if we just had-
Add president of the legisla, or that, what's the-
The chairperson of the Legislative Committee.
That's, I mean, that's fine. Again, I'm just, so we're clear, that nobody accuses us of violating open meetings.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, Ms. Williams is going to amend here?
Can I, I just want to then amend my motion. I got to pull it back up now, dang. I got it, thank you. I would like to amend the motion to strike board officers and just add board president.
Just board officers and Legislative Committee Chair.
Okay. So, board officers and Legislative Committee Chair.
And Ms. America, are you good with that?
Yes.
So, she'll second that. So, there's a motion on the table by Ms. Williams to add the word chair after the wording in front of us, and a second by Ms. America. Is there any other discussion about this item? And, Mr. Evans would like to have some discussion.
I just want to make sure I have some clarity, too, while we've got David Kramer here. GNSA is an organization that we belong to. It's 24 of the 248 districts across the state of Nebraska, but it represents over two-thirds of the students in Nebraska, and it's the population that looks a lot like OPS in those 24 districts. In this group, I also represent the district, and would like to represent whatever the Legislative Committee wants me to represent. So, this says just Lindsay O'Hare. Am I, does that, is that restrictive, then, for me as a, a member of GNSA, and we also will have board members that will participate in GNSA as well? Does that statement restrict me, because it just references Lindsay O'Hare? And maybe I'm fine-tooth combing it, but I just want to make sure we're not doing something that someone else says, "Well, we didn't say that you'd be our legislative representative and carry the Legislative Committee's water with GNSA." And so, I guess I, I want to know that, too, because they vote as well. They, they vote as well, and typically, it's going to be the same votes that our Legislative Committee would support, but it is a separate group and body than Lindsay O'Hare.
The intent of this was to be narrow. This is the first conversation, at least, that I've been involved in with respect to GNSA, in large measure, because O'Hara and Lindsay, as our lobbyists on a day-to-day basis, are the ones who have to make those, those decisions, you know, have to represent what our decisions are, where we are on bills. To the extent that the board wants to expand that authority to, to represent the school district's positions in other organizations, the, the board is certainly free to do so.
Mrs. Fay.
I would prefer not to amend this, to add GNSA-
I would prefer not to amend this to add GNSA, just because as a superintendent of the district, you do represent us, not just at that organization and take, but, you know, for example, on the learning community superintendents, you know, and you took votes there. So, I think that that's what you do as superintendent, implied rather than explicitly stated in this resolution, I prefer to keep it narrow.
Any other discussion?
The one other thing I could say on that, on that note is, there's nothing, I would think, to preclude either the superintendent or any individual board member who's a part of any organization that's involved in legislation, to represent what this board has taken as action, supporting or, you know, this is only designed to address those issues that come up quickly in between times when this board has the opportunity to act.
Great. Mr. Ray, roll call please.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion passes, and at this time, we'll go ahead and ask for a little bit of an update on the legislative pieces that have come up in the last two days.
You, at, at your next board meeting, you'll have the remainder of the bills that were introduced, just to give you an idea, Ms. America's aware of what happens down there in the last couple of days. Prior, in, in the first eight days, 430 bills were introduced, in the last two days, 260 bills were introduced. So it's a, it's always those last couple of days that you get a big, in this case, whatever the math is on that, about a third of the bills introduced. So, given the fact that 160 of those, I believe, were introduced today, I haven't read them all. The, but there are those, of course, that pop up, we've done, we've gone through the one-liners, looked at quite a few of them, not, not really analyzing, just quickly skimmed through those and identified several of them. And there are, out of their, out of the group of today's, we think there's about 32 to 34 that, that we're gonna be bringing to more, to your attention a little bit more. Out of those, there's three that I, that have to bring to your attention, or would like to bring to your attention right away, they deal with OSERS. And those are LBs 446, 447, and 448. LB 446 is one I think you've discussed before, it's changing the, it aligns the, the definition of compensation within OSERS so that it aligns with the definition of compensation in Npers. And I think that the, the board has been aware of that. The other two, the board has not had an opportunity to, to discuss. LB 447 would be a bill that was offered by the, as I understand it, the OSERS trustees, that would make some pretty...
OEA.
Pardon me?
I think it's the OEA.
Is it OEA, okay, I'm sorry.
Correct, we are part, some of us are part of the trustees and we did not...
Okay, so it was OEA. But it, but it is a bill that had, makes some pretty significant changes. And I, I'll come back to that, allowing Mr. Kramer to get into it, who's been through it a little bit more than I have. But 448 is the other one, and it is a broad bill that simply starts the process of merging OSERS into Npers. And it was the sponsor, we've had some discussion with, I had some discussion with the sponsor of the bill today, and what he wanted to do, he does not intend to pass the bill this session. It's not that, it's that, not that kind of an imperative. He does want to start that discussion and see what, see where people are on it. So I, the, their hearing, got word that it could be coming up next week. I talked to the chair and said, "In order to have, if you, to have a better hearing, our board needs time to consider where they are on it and to, to discuss among themselves." We are hoping that that hearing would be a little bit further out to allow you to, to have that discussion, 'cause as I understand it, you can't do it tonight because it was not noticed as a, as an action item. So, that, that bill will be out there, and what the senators looking for is kind of that 30,000-foot sort of conceptual, where are we, what kind of obstacles would there be? Would you generally support, generally oppose, those kinds of things, not down in the weeds of, of, of going through all the details of it. But that, that is a bill that I think the board's gonna have to have a discussion on coming up, and I would allow Mr. Kramer to, to discuss 447.
And I'll keep it short, Megan is gonna provide you in the morning with a detailed summary of what 447 does. I just wanna cover a couple of things that are critically important for you to know. The first thing that it does is it takes, it removes all OPS board members that are, that are members of OSERS as trustees off of that, so there would no longer be board representation. More critically, it says that this board would have to fund at whatever level the trustees determined it needed to be funded, without any authority whatsoever by this board to say, "No, we can't afford it," or whatever, which you, which you currently retain. And third point worth noting is it does create a criminal violation on members of this board if we willfully don't do things that they ask us to do, class five misdemeanor. Those are just three of the, no, class five is a hundred, a hundred dollar fine and, and, yeah, so, there are things in there, I think, that you will find equally as troubling, I will provide you with that detail in the morning. Suffice it to say that 447 is, is essentially an effort to completely remove this board's authority from any aspect of OSERS. And you probably can tell what our sentiments are as your, as your advisors on that bill. So, you'll receive that in the morning. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all so much for your report. Mrs. Fay.
I would just ask, if we're done with agenda items J.2, J.2.0.0A, with your permission, I'd like to skip down to J.2.G. while Mr. Lindsay is still here, just if there's gonna be any discussion on the Opportunity Schools Resolution, because there was a charter schools bill introduced today, and if you just had any questions regarding that for Mr. Lindsay, I didn't want him to either have to wait around or to leave and not be available. So it's a, just a request to you, Mrs. Gotti.
Okay, so, we'll move down to J.2.G., or move it up, or however we wanna word that. So, Mr. Lindsay, can you give us a little update on what the charter school piece was?
Mrs. Fay, Mrs. Fay is correct that the Independent Public Schools Act was introduced today as LB 616. It, again, I have not had an opportunity to read in depth all the bills, it appears to be, if not the same as the, as the bill that the board had a discussion about last year, it would be very similar to it. But that, so yes, there is a bill, and I really can't ask, answer detailed questions about it, 'cause I have not done the analysis on it yet.
Okay. Mrs. Fay was the one who put together this resolution concerning Opportunity Schools draft, so I will turn it over to you.
Sure, I, um... Pull it up, I apologize, I didn't have it up. Based on the board discussion last time and additional conversations with community members, some of the wording was changed to reflect the intention that it be Opportunity Schools, and in alignment with the strategic plan, and then there was some additional financial oversight language at the request of some teachers that I met with. Once again, this is the attempt to, to address things, to address two, two things. Number one, bad charter school bills, so it clearly states, there, there's enough precedent out there for what, for charter school bills and what they are around the country, that we know when some of the elements of not good bills are, and what are some things that are working. So this is an attempt to, to say to the legislature, these are pieces that we can support and really want to, I'm sorry, I'm tired, versus what a bad charter school looks like. I don't wanna reiterate our whole conversation we had before. And then the other part of this would be that this is a complimentary piece to the, to the policy that we adopted a month or two ago regarding community partnerships, 'cause it also clearly spells out for something like 75 North, or if Skinner comes before us again, what kinds of innovations and creative educational opportunities that we're open to. So I think it gives direction to staff and community, it also gives direction to the legislature. That's why I brought it forward.
Is there, do you have any questions or any discussions, or, Mr. Scanlon?
With the bill being introduced today, when would, I guess it'd be discussed publicly with, with a committee or public hearings?
Bill, the bill was introduced today, so it, it's at the very early stages. It has to be referenced to a committee, it's not even on that process. Bottom line, it has to go through quite a few steps before it gets to the hearing. The, the committee chair has the discretion of when that bill would be scheduled. If I were to speculate, it would be sometime, I'm guessing, maybe second or third week of February. I, it's not, I don't, given the fact it was introduced on the 10th day, I don't see it being scheduled anytime in the next couple of weeks, certainly, and my guess is beyond that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Vargas.
Another question, I was just gonna try to make connections between many of the things we've been talking about, we talk about Title I and the school improvement timeline, and in year one, school choice. And school choice, defined across the United States, is very different, but when you think about school choice in, in, in a district or state that provides charters, it really is providing an additional, another opportunity for like a strong school option for the lowest performing populations of students, and I think it's, it's just a good connection to that. I also think this connects really well to this conversation we're having around turnaround schools. You know, we, we still have not come back to the conversation about dual language academies or, you know, our, you know, Wilson Focus Schools, and how we're gonna expand on those, but, you know, I think this still directly ties, and even when we're thinking about the conversation we're gonna have in a second about the school improvement grant application process, and you look at one of the different models, is restart, typically when you do restart, you are typically, one, one of the, the options, or one of the routes they usually go is using some sort of charter management organization if that's an, an option in a district, and part of it is, is, 'cause they're independently, they're larger organizations that have, to misfaced point, figured out, you know, what are the best practices, how do we sustain it, how do we do it equitably, and how do we ensure that it's all done fair, the same standards as other public school districts? And so, it's just, I think, a really good connection to many things we've been talking about, I don't think they're all in isolation. I think it's important for us to consider as we think about adopting something like this.
Whoops, sorry. Are there any other comments?
I move approval of the resolution concerning Opportunity Schools that is before us.
So there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Wayne to move approval of the resolution, resolution concerning Opportunity Schools, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vargas, is there any other discussion? Mr. Wayne.
I just think it's critical that we be out in front, just like we were with lunch programs, just like we, we were with NSAA or GPA requirements, I think we have to take the lead, and I think we have to have the conversation, especially as we look down the road, of keeping students in our buildings. And definitely, when we look down the road and start thinking about phase two of our bond, we have a school that is, that is starting next year, and by the time we go out for bond in 2017, they will have a full school, elementary school. We're arguing in part capacity, but we'll subtract 450 kids to that school. And if charters get done to us and they're done outside of us in 2017, 'cause you gotta remember, there's 2016 election, and for all intents and purposes, it looks like some areas are moving more conservative than they are middle of the aisle. If those students go outside the district, whether it's online learning, I know Mr. Evans was a part of that down in Kansas, and let's say they go to a neighboring district like Millard or, or Westside, and they become a part of that population, then that could be another 500 kids, 1,000 kids that we lose. This is an opportunity for us to think innovative, creative, to have an online blending environment that I've seen in other school districts across the country. I'm thinking of one at the Malcolm X College in Chicago. But it's just a way for us to have the conversation the way we wanna define it and how we wanna define it. I mean, I just posted on my Facebook, teacher-led schools. Most of those are done in charters outside of the district, but unfortunately, we can do it within our district if we start thinking innovative and do it ourselves, but we seem somewhat reluctant to at times. So I think this is a way to keep our students in our district, think innovative in our district, and provide people outside the district a way and a path to help us be innovative while maintaining our students, and that's why I support it. I, I'm looking down the road, and we, we may be okay this year, but it's a conversation starter, and if our position is no charters, and then 2016 comes around and everybody's running for different things and, and it comes through, we might be behind the ball. It's, it's important for us to start this conversation on our terms and start it early. This is not authorizing charters, this is not authorizing contracted schools, this is a conversation starter that we can have as board members, with state senators, and our professional contracted services can have with, with, with state senators. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon.
As I've said before, I think that OPS has been a leader in alternative education, multiple programs that are non-traditional in the sense of the dual language program. We have a musical and liberal arts program magnet, we have, you know, magnets that span STEM education, we have a lot of different programs that are available within OPS that a lot of people don't know, they are available outside of OPS. I think it would serve us better at this point in time to promote the programs that we do have, exhibit the wide variety of alternative education that we currently offer and that we are expanding at this time. I believe Liberty is in their first year of a dual edu, dual language that was expanded this year. So we are acting as a district to expand those opportunities for all our students. We've expanded early, early childhood education in North and South Omaha. We've done a lot of things that I believe will start to show very large improvements in our student achievement. I don't think that we need the distraction of charter schools, I don't think we need the distraction of bringing other organizations within our district boundaries. I think that we need to continue to focus as a school district in expanding the offerings that we do have and talking about increasing the alternative education, like at Howard Kennedy. We're in conversation with 75 North to try to figure out what would work for that community. So, I think that we're moving in a, in a very strong and positive direction. I think with new board leadership, new superintendent, new structure within OPS as far as the executive directors, I think we're moving in a positive direction, and I don't think that we need to, at this point in time, start losing focus.
Ms. Merrick.
So, I'll be kind of frank and honest. I, I am very torn on this still. And I've discussed with Ms. Fay and with other people, and part of that is because I hear us talking about, oh, we need, we need this to be innovative, we need this to do this and this, but this doesn't do anything new. Everything that is in this resolution about groups being able to come and say they want to do a school program or have an alternative school, we can do that already. I mean, we have, our programs with the Zoo and the Med Center are the first things that pop in my mind, and if they came to us and said, we want to work with you guys to have a full high school program instead of the partial programs they have now, there's nothing stopping us from doing that. If we were, you know, saying something along the lines of, as a district, we need to promote these opportunities better and recruit organizations that we think we should be working with following the guidelines and, that we passed previously for community partnerships, that would be a no-brainer to me. In this, we're saying that we're going to work to support legislation about enabling local elected boards to authorize these plans and there really, it's things that we can do. We don't technically need legislation to do those things. And so that makes me think, you know, okay, if we pass this, are we going to direct our contracted services to, with the charter school bills, work with them to change it so that it mirrors this more? I, I just don't still see the exact purpose of the resolution.
Ms. Williams.
Well, first, I want to thank Mrs. Fay for continuing to put very thoughtful effort into this resolution. I appreciate the work that you've done. However, where I am right now, I still believe that we have made great strides to better our district. And this will be, at this time for me, just one of those things that we will have to respectfully agree to disagree. But I do, there are some points in here that have, are drawing to me, however, for me, this is a, this is something that if we don't follow our strategic plan or if we get offline and we see that, you know, the work that we put in doesn't, isn't doing what we said it would do, then this at that time could be something that I would be potentially open for, but right now, I'm gonna stand firm in my position.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak before Mr. Vargas? Okay, Ms. Underwood?
I understand the impetus for this resolution and echoing what Ms. Williams said, I think that a lot of hard work was put into it and I appreciate everything that Ms. Fay has done to put this together. My issue has more to do with perception as well as the fact that we can, we can do innovative things without this resolution. I've had multiple people come up to me since this came up at a board meeting the first time and say, so you guys are in support of charter schools now? What's going on? And so I explained to them what the intent of this is and, but I, I still think that just because we haven't spent enough time thinking about it and talking about it and going out to the community, it's, it's gonna create unintended consequences by us voting for it. I also think, I feel really good about the process that we have in place now with the community partnerships and our schools and, which was used by the Seventy-Five North group. So if the opportunity does come up for an innovative or sort of alternative type of school, there is a process that we've put into place for doing something like that. So I, for me, I just, I'm not comfortable approving it at this point, but I do think that, you know, it's something that we need to keep in the back of our minds, it's something we need to keep discussing. And I look forward to continuing our focus through the strategic plan and with all of the improvements that, you know, we're already making and will continue to make in our schools currently.
Mr. Stone?
Thank you, Madam President. When I initially read this, I remember I came back when I was first elected and I was adamantly against charter schools and I am. I don't want to lose our kids and that's my biggest concern. If we don't create something of our own, somebody's gonna create something and force it upon us. And I represent a district that has some low-performing students in it. And when something outside the district comes, they appeal to it. When other school districts, when the learning community was created, you look at where kids go, people from my district flock to those other areas. And this allows something that could come to my district and stay there and those kids stay there. And that's, that's the thing and, that's the thing that gets me. I don't feel like it's something that's saying OPS is allowing charter schools to come, but it still says they come here and we approve that and it's a partnership. And we still have a say. And I have a feeling that if we do not do something, we will lose that voice and then we'll be reactive. And I don't want to be reactive anymore. So I'll be supporting this tonight.
Mr. Vargas?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, it's interesting and just been thinking a lot about, you know, some of the presenters from the SIG grant and what I appreciated the most about their interpretation of no child left behind, sanctions, was really focused in a growth mindset and really focused on being visionary. You know, we, it was focused on what is best for kids, what is really best for kids, not what do I ideologically believe in, I think is right, which there's no right or wrong in this, or what I think politically is right or is gonna, you know, cause a rift or cause a problem. But ultimately, what are we seeing outside of our state? And I say outside of our state specifically and within our state, and how can we create a growth mindset and a vision around what we want that to be? You know, I actually agree to a very significant extent to what Ms. Merrick mentioned around, we have tools to be able to do a lot of these things. I do, I do believe that. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't continue to be growth mindset oriented about looking at the other things that are improving student achievement across our entire country. I think when we frame it in that way and we're looking at these programs and now we're seeing history, history of academic results being proven and, and, you know, we, we see it in dual language, you see, we also see it in charter schools, we see it in turnaround school districts. Actually, it's funny, Opportunity Schools is an actual, it's copyrighted actually because there's a whole theory, a whole company that does opportunity school, turnaround schools that create operational flexibility, similar to Howard Kennedy, that kind of fall within this. And we already elected to do that. So for me, this is really, what do we stand for, right? What do we stand for? Are we standing for doing, figuring out everything potentially that is best for kids and doing it within the confines of our strategic plan, which we, Howard Kennedy and Seventy-Five North was not in a strategic plan. And we voted on that anyway because we believed it was best for kids. At least that's what I feel like we did. Well, I believe the rest of this is also best for kids. We are not going to intentionally bring in something or that is gonna be detrimental to our, our district. We are gonna ensure that we are, that's why being proactive, setting a standard for what we believe in and what we hope it to look like, is gonna influence what legislators then draft as opposed to it being imposed upon us. And I see that time and time again in other states and legislators tend to do that. And I don't see many local education agencies, districts like us, doing that. I really don't. But what I do see the local legislation districts do is creating a vision or, you know, memorandum of understanding, some sort of a resolution that really combines what they believe in. I don't think we have that yet. I think we have the tools, I don't think we state what we stand for and the extent to which we're willing to, to go to, to address some of these inequities. And I think that's what this does. It opens up floodgates for, or opens up the opportunity for us to define that as opposed to it being defined upon us.
With that, I'll wrap up with just a couple of my comments. I too think Mrs. Fay should put a lot of time into this and has put a lot of effort into this and has talked to lots and lots of folks, and so I appreciate that. I feel as though these options are already available to us in the many different types of programs that we can offer. And what I want to make sure is that we stay focused on the strategic plan and what the community asked us to do. And so for me, this wasn't something that I heard asked for by any particular part of our community. What they wanted us to do was, as some of the speakers said, to stay laser-focused on getting it right and aligning our entire district and creating equity across the district. So, so I'm not supportive of it at this time because I want to make sure that we stay focused on what, where we're going. So at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Ray to do a roll call.
No?
Aye.
Underwood?
No.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
No.
Fay?
Aye.
Gauding?
No.
Merrick?
No.
Scanlon?
No.
That's four I, five no.
Motion fails. At this time, I would like us to move item J2E because we have a lot of external guests here as our next item. So if we could move to J2E design firm selection, that would be great.
Thank you, President Gauding. I'm gonna ask Mark Sommer, the bond program manager, to come forward to present this item.
Thank you again. Yeah, the action item that's in front of you, we briefly discussed during the information item, it's to, to award the design contracts, oops, for the quick start projects. So if you recall, those are the first projects right out of the gate with an intense completion schedule. We also provided a document to give a little bit of clarity of what the process was to get us to this point, to try to help maybe answer any questions or comments that would be there. Is there any question?
I apologize. Go ahead.
I have moved to approve the appointment of the following firms to provide professional services, including plans, specifications, and construction administration for 2014 bond program quick start projects as outlined in the attached document. Carlson West, I'm gonna mess this up, I believe. Pavandra Architects, Morrissey Engineering, Kenneth Hahn Architects, Ferris Engineering, Leo A. Daley, and Jackson, Jackson and Associates.
There's a motion on the table to approve the various firms as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Mr. Scanlon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gauding?
Aye.
Merrick?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
No.
Eight I, one no.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I'd like to move to J2D grade level configuration.
Scott and I have prepared about a forty, forty-minute presentation that will cover this.
Great, that's what we were looking for, for an hour?
Forty, forty. President Gauding, Vice President Williams, board members, and Mr. Evans, thank you again for having the opportunity to bring this forward to you. I wanted to give a little background first. On December 15th, 2014, we provided notice that we'd be providing to this, to you. But there's a little bit more background and a little bit more information that I wanted to supply, supply as part of this presentation. And it goes back to December 2007. December 2007, the Office of Educational Accountability organized input opportunities regarding broad concepts for the student assignment plan. Two concepts received considerable support in 2007. First, the expansion of early childhood and second, the expansion of the district's seven, eight middle schools to include sixth grade. In June of 2010, the Board of Education approved Davis Middle School as a six, eight grade configuration. In November 2011, the Student Community Services Human Resources Committee, remember that, brought forward a middle school expansion plan which included grade level configuration to six, eight, beginning in the 2012, 2013 school year. At the end of 2011, the Board approved moving Castleton Field Club's sixth graders to Norris Middle School. Just this April, the Facility Steering Committee used sixth grade level configuration as part of its planning parameters. Furthermore, in the three community dialogue parameters and considerations meetings held by Jacobs, included the six, eight middle school configuration as a part of those meetings. At the June 6th Board of Education Work Session Regarding the Community Dialogue, Jacobs again presented the preferred grade configuration, which included the six, eight model. At the Soon Assignment Plan Board of Education Workshop in July 21, 2014, the Research Department provided information on middle grade configuration research, grade configuration, and student achievement. Jacobs again presented information August 4th, 2014, to the Board of Education, which included information regarding the six, eight model. We are looking, we're looking ahead regarding new construction and renovation and want to make sure that we plan carefully for all students in the Omaha Public Schools. With that in mind, Central Office Staff recommends, one, all new construction or remodeling of OPS middle schools is done based on a six, eight configuration. Two, that all current OPS middle schools are transitioned to a six, eight model as soon as their capacity allows, except for King Science and Mars, which will remain a five, eight. As part of our presentation tonight, Scott will be providing a quick overview of some data and a brief overview of the timeline. Good evening. As Matt suggested, I will sing you a very brief song of data, not a lullaby though, we're not ready for that yet. I'm gonna reference this document first, as prepared by Casey Hughes of our staff. And we'll use Beveridge as an example, just to kind of walk through this. This is what we used for timelining when these changes might occur. So for Beveridge, you have the name, of course, to the left, the current grade range for that school, seven, eight, the number of portables currently in use there, and the OPS rated capacity for the building. Just as a note, that's based on a class size of 18 students, which is in the educational research, best practice or the recommended model. Looking at official fall membership is the next column. So we had 709 students at Beveridge at official fall membership at the end of October. That left 65 seats available, open in Beveridge. Of those seats that were filled with those 709 students, the green column shows that 389 of those students were from the home attendance area. If we were just to look at the home attendance area and exclude those students who optioned into the dual language program there, that would have remaining capacity or an open capacity of 385 students. So doing the simple arithmetic tick there, you can see that in kind of this salmon color, I haven't got salmon, there's 320 students from outside of the home attendance area currently attending Beveridge. If we look at these additional students, we've done this a number of different ways. So one thing we've done is we've looked at the current enrollment for the earliest grade in the school. So for Beveridge, that's seventh grade. And we just duplicated that, assuming that choice patterns that resulted in that seventh grade class would likely be replicated to a large degree in the class that would be added for sixth grade. So here we see 336, 336 students at seventh grade at Beveridge currently. The other way we did it is to look at the home attendance area only, and if we were to add only those students who are currently looked to go to Beveridge or assigned to go to Beveridge as their home attendance area school, we see 186 students. So then moving through the last cells, we have two different that's were to happen, we wouldn't have space for those students currently. The next columns, the blue columns, which is the last three columns, looks at if we only were to consider home attendance area students. And so in these columns, we see that this would have five hundred and seventy-five students, grade six through eight, with a remaining open capacity of one hundred and ninety-nine seats. And in that instance, we would have room. So that makes sense. So just talking through those columns and how we use this data to timeline when we might be able to have room. So looking at Beverage, what we would conclude is that the school is scheduled for an expansion in sixteen, seventeen. So it would be suggested to wait until that is completed to allow for either of these models to work out. And that's why on the timeline document, you see that we have Beverage slated for, as I said, seventeen, eighteen for consideration. Just talking through these two models, what I'm hoping to pass on here is that there are a lot of variables at play here. And really, in this timeline, these dates represent the earliest possible date this could happen. Just to speak through three of the variables, we have the student assignment plan, construction timeline, and then a phase-two bond that impacts these timelines. We'll open it to your questions.
You were brief, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much. So at this time, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Schmitz, Bonnie, on Ms. America?
It's quick, I promise. I'm assuming because Morton is up in the buildings adding sixth grade because they don't have very many sixth graders right now, that the schools of fifth graders would be going out to have sufficient room for them because we broke that down for the other ones. So...
On Morton?
On Morton. Because we included it in the seven, eight buildings adding sixth grade because they don't have a lot of fifth and sixth grader.
Correct. As a document, there's some more detail on the back of the timelines you may have seen. So yeah, we would, we would look at the eighteen, nineteen inclusion for that. Sure, I'm answering your question.
My question was, so the schools that the fifth graders would have been moving to would have sufficient room for them? It wouldn't be like we'd be moving portable like the Buffett proposal says?
That's correct. In Morton's case, it appears that there would be sufficient space at their feeder. So in instances where there wouldn't be, we do detail that in this document. Sorry.
Mr. Wayne?
I don't know how to ask this. I'm so tired. Prior to this recommendation, over the last two months, maybe month and a half, were there community meetings held at Dundee Elementary School? And what was the reason for those community meetings?
Sure. I know we've been to Dundee twice. I can't speak to when the first meeting was. It was prior to Dr. Norlinger leaving. Recently, I believe it was roughly two weeks ago, at the request, I believe Mrs. Fay, we did attend, Mr. Underwood, I'm sorry, we did attend at a board member's request, the Dundee's PTA meeting held recently.
What was the rationale for it?
I requested that specifically for Dundee because those were the parents, frankly, that we heard from the most regarding grade configuration. They had shown up, if you remember, at that July twenty-first meeting, and had quite a few comments. And there was also misinformation. So I wanted to make sure, now that we had, you know, a timeline and something more set in stone that we got out there and kind of nipped any misinformation spreading in the bud and just helped answer their questions more than anything.
Well, what concerns me about this vote tonight is, in July, you showed a slide where northeast Omaha was in favor of only six, I mean, they were strongly in favor of the six, I mean, seven, eight model and not the six, eight. And one of our needs assessment is that we need to be respectful for unique cultures. And the fact that they didn't come to a board meeting, but even though in an online survey said that they didn't like this model, I think their voice carries just as much weight as the parents who show up here and talk. So I'm going to move tonight, I'm not making my motion now, but I'm telling you, I'm going to move to table this until after community meetings are held in northeast Omaha, so those people get the same opportunity and the same education as far as what, and the reasons why, and the timelines, just as the Dundee parents did. So I'll make my motion to move this matter until after community forums are done in the other part of the district, northeast Omaha, who were in favor of the seven, eight model. So I move the table this, so my motion is I move the table this till after community forums are done in northeast Omaha in the same capacity that was done in the Dundee area.
Second. So there's a motion on the table and a second to table this. Ms. America?
I, I was all in support of this motion until you specified that we had to do it just in northeast Omaha. Because I think we should, honestly, it's something we should do in all the areas of the city. Because we, we said we would have public hearings about the student assignment plan. And I, this is so intricately linked to the student assignment plan that it is something we need to go out and present people with the data. Because when people look at the data of why this is the change that's being recommended, they may change their opinion. I know when I was taking the survey, it was kind of like, oh, you know, well, this is what I think right now. There wasn't data to go through or read or additional information. But I completely agree. I, you know, I would like to get feedback.
I will withdraw my motion and make a new motion to table this until after there are community forums in each quadrant of the city, or in different parts of the city to get a full representation of what the community feels about this plan.
Ms. Williams? Did you okay? Okay. Sorry. Ms. Fay?
I think, I understand the need for some guidance as it relates to getting the bond work done. I'm not exactly sure why we have to make, pass a vote tonight on all of these schools when there's possibly some discussion that needs to go on at many, if not all of them. So I don't know what is keeping us from making the decision to move sixth grade on a school-by-school basis. We're already in the timeline making two exceptions. Those are two that we're making now at the top of the decision. In our previous discussion regarding the Opportunity Schools Resolution, there was lots of input from board members about the innovative things that we can already do. And absolutely, we can do those things. And I have been encouraging us to do them since the day I got on this board. So if, if we have a community member come forward tomorrow with all of the pieces in place, the funding, the, the research-based educational curriculum, amazing staff, all of these things, but it's a K-eight building, you know, then we're making another exception. So I don't, I'm just not sure that the urgency to make a decision on all of these schools right now tonight is what we need to do. And I think probably we can plan for, to communicate to each of these schools, school by school, and make the decision within the timeline of the construction. So...
So I have one question for Dr. Turnquist on that. What is, what is the timeline on Sunny Slope?
Well, there are two things to consider. One is if you go to six, eight, how is that going to affect the, the space need at that middle school? But if you don't go to that, how does that affect the space needs at the elementary feeder schools? So I would like, if you don't mind, Ms. Gotti, to call Cheryl Human forward, if she would just give us a quick review of some of the things that have been considered, if Cheryl and Mark Summer would come forward, give us a quick review of some of the things that the bond management team is considering in all of this, in terms of the schedule and...
Well, with all due respect to the time, I mean, I think we've had the, and that's fine to have them come in, but I think we've had lots of that. I guess my, I would have a very simple question is, is it possible to make a decision school by school and fit it within the construction timeline?
And they can come up and discuss that. I was just responding to Mrs. Gotti's request that I comment on the timeline.
I guess I'm just wondering, I think we're trying to do community forums in February and early March. So I guess my question is, can you move forward on some of the work that's happening? Or, or will that need to stop because of, you need to wait to hear back from us?
Currently, the, the way the schedule is set up is we'd be coming back to the Board on the nineteenth of February for architectural selection.
Okay.
So I think there might be some opportunity to mesh the two schedules together to make sure we can account for that
Okay.
Meeting.
Yep.
It's, it's just quickly thereafter, we'll, we'll need to move swiftly.
Okay. So that sounds good. So if we can have something, maybe even at the next board meeting, to address some of the construction pieces that they're going to be bringing to us on the nineteenth would be good. All right. So there is a motion on the table to table, to table this until, it's a lot of tables, until there have been community forums held by Mr. Wayne. And was the second by Mrs. Fay? By a second by Mrs. Fay. Is there any other discussion? Not, oh, Mr. Scanlon?
I just have a question that I'd asked last time, why King Science and Mars were going to remain, or were recommended to remain five through eight while the other middle schools were recommended six through eight.
Sure. Speaking in order there, King Science, if we were to move in that direction now with how students make choice to that school, it would drop the, the population of that school below a level that is recommended in the research as far as a percentage of the open space. Regarding Mars, the feeders currently can't take the additional capacity. It would require the building of a new school just to start with. So once those, the new school is built and the feeders can accommodate, then we'd have to worry about the membership of that building as well.
All right. Mr. Wayne?
But that goes to mark Mr. Snow's point about people in his district optioning out to other places. And maybe it's not, if we go six, eight, I'm just keeping it back in your mind, that maybe we phase it in, but we let the, I know, you know, Mr. Eubanks was there and was doing a phenomenal job, but that's part of growing that. If we're going to be uniform, and that's what this Board wants to do, we need to be uniform. To Mrs. Fay's point, when we start making exceptions, that we just take it away. I mean, we think that's what's best for kids, then we stand by what's best for kids.
Ms. Williams?
I'm open to tabling this conversation, just so more community members have time to request that and to have those community forums. However, I just want to also remind everyone that this was something that was already planning to be, to happen, to move to six, eight. And this has been a part of the conversation. And to Ms. America's point, it is very much attached to student assignment plan and how we move forward. But I've heard from my constituents and honestly, some of Mr. Snow's constituents, that they've been waiting for it. It's something that the district has said that they were going to do for several years. They're waiting on it to happen. And so I, I just, again, I'm open to more conversation so that we all have more time to work with our constituents. And if there's any other groups that we can help facilitate, as Mrs. Underwood did, that's open. But again, I just, this was something the district was going to do. And more feedback that I've personally received is, when are you going to do it? Not, are you going to do it, but when are you going to do it? So just kind of remembering the history of how this started, and we have to be mindful of that as well. So, thank you.
With that, roll call, please.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
No.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Eight I, one no.
Motion passes. We're going to move to school improvement grant because I think we have some folks here still waiting on that. So let's do that one. And then, then we have two, hopefully, that can move pretty quickly so we can wrap up.
Jocelyn Perkins will be presenting that.
I'm before you again to provide information, to inform you about the decision that, or the extent that you would like to move forward on the school improvement grant. I'll just briefly go over the information. I'm not going to go over the overview. That was just to give you some background. So we have two hundred and fifty-six schools in the state of Nebraska that are persistently low achieving schools. Nebraska has forty-seven of those or eighteen percent. Tier one and tier two schools are priority schools. So if you're going to apply, there's priority given to those as they review them that are tier one and tier two. If a tier two school is selected that is not a Title I school, then before they can receive the award, they have to become a school-wide school. So that kind of, I don't know, upsets the apple cart for whatever funding that you already have in place for Title I. The awards can't exceed $2 million over a three-year period. So essentially, you're looking at a six hundred and sixty-six, six hundred and sixty-six thousand and six hundred and sixty-six dollar grant every three years. There is talk in legislation about extending that to four years, but for the sake of this discussion and the application, we'll say three years. Minimum amount is $50,000. Historically, SIG has been awarded to many districts, and each district and each school that has applied for it, oddly enough, has chosen the transformation model. So, next steps, we would probably need to identify a school. Then if you identify a school, you'd need to identify a model. And I'm just going to say it real quick again, turnaround model, remove the principal and half the staff. Restart, use a charter management group or an education management group to run the school. School closure, close the school, re-enroll the students in another school. Essentially, you're removing the principal and the staff. And transformation, you're initially replacing the principal, and you have the latitude based on evaluation. After implementation for a year or so, unsuccessful staff can be replaced. So as much information as we have at this point is that the Department of Ed has sent in their application to the U.S. Department of Ed and not received any word yet. So they haven't put a date on, a definite date on when the application is due. Typically, you look at late February, early March that it's due and still being funded around April. So that's as much information as I have and the Department of Ed has. And I guess if we're going to proceed, staff needs a lot of time to write. It's a very substantial grant. There is an audit process after they write this and they're funded. Then NDE comes back in to audit to see who has weighed in on it. Stakeholders typically are parents, staff, community groups, collective bargaining units, or the union. So we would need to get that going if that's how we're going to proceed.
Right. So you don't have a lot of time. So are there, does anybody have any questions specific to Jocelyn about how that would work? Mr. Vargas?
Given the, this is the connection, I'm trying to make the connection from my previous, you know, questions around school turnaround, potentially, you know, what does accountability look like? How do we actually define that, especially when it persistently low performing schools? Because the reality is if we apply for this, we would have schools where we would potentially be moving principals out of a school and hiring new principals, potentially hiring fifty percent new staff from within the district or outside the district, what have you. But it's a reality. Given that's such a reality, and...
Right, so you don't have a lot of time. So, are there, does anybody have any questions specific to Jocelyn about how that would work? Mr. Vargas?
Given the, this is the connection, I'm trying to make the connection from my previous, you know, questions around school turnaround, potentially, you know, what does accountability look like? How do we actually define that, especially when it persists in low performing schools? Because the reality is if we apply for this, we would have schools where we would potentially be moving principals out of a school and hiring new principals, potentially hiring 50 percent new staff from within the district or outside the district, what have you. But it's a reality. Given that's such a reality and I don't, you know, one piece that you talked about was the community plan, community engagement. How are we ensuring we are, I mean, with a tight timeline, and I do not want to do this, you know, ill-informed, too rushed. This is a big change for our district and how are we, what, you know, what is our, how are we thinking about actively engaging the community and parents and educating them on what this means for their school and what the options actually are? So that they are informed about what changes could look like in their school. That's the first question.
Can I just go?
Yeah, go, yeah, we'll go there.
Because you'll say something else and then I'll forget.
No, my bad, go ahead.
Okay. The first thing that we would probably want to do is, in order to get input, you would have to have a plan. So, are we talking about significantly extending the school day? And I'm not talking about before and after, but, you know, extending it for learning. What are we talking about doing as far as those things that you're talking about that make it innovative? And those parents being able to weigh in on that? And then looking at the capacity of the staff to do something like that. So, those would be some of the things that we would be looking at. And when you're talking about weigh-in and input, initially, you would think about the parents at that school and what would, what would they think would be good for their students? Because just because we think something philosophically is good, it may not work for them as a family. So, your families, your PTOs, your PTAs, your individual groups, and then those groups that serve those students. So, your community groups, and how's that going to impact them? Because if we extended the day significantly and extended before and after-school activities, any community group that was also serving you, that would impact what they do.
Yeah, I agree. That's what I would love to see. And I would, I should encourage the board. I think we should figure, create a comprehensive plan that prioritizes not just creating a plan for each school and then having people react to it, because I think that's, that's not being fair to our community and our parents. But they should also understand what the different models are and the unintended consequences and benefits of each one. We should do something like that.
Can I just also say that we cannot do that and get funded?
We can. It happens in other districts.
We cannot. Well, we could-
You can have informational meetings with parents and community to, about the models and what the models are and get feedback on, and educate them on it.
We have an audit group, so at some point, you could turn that in. But when they came back to meet with those people that you allegedly said that you gave input to, the extent to which you gave that input would be questionable and you might not get funded. Seriously, there is an audit process and they're very thorough about who was in the room, what was your role, how did you, how did you develop this, what is it that you had input on? So it's not just me going to the keyboard and saying, "Shift-G, grant," it comes up. They have to, they have to be involved in that. And that's from the data all the way down to just the actual activities and how they're crafted. And that's how we've done school improvement plans in the district for schools that haven't even applied for SIG.
Yeah, and it's dual, right? The difference between informing and educating the community and then getting their feedback, two different things. I don't think that if we ask our parents right now, they can tell me what, you know, all of them can tell me what the different, no child left behind regulations are and how it's currently impacting their school and whatever their, you know, year they're in and restructuring or what have you. And there's that. And then, when we're applying, creating a plan for each school and then actually having the feedback mechanisms between parents. Because, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the school improvement process right now, there's no mandate to have parents or community members involved in the school improvement planning, is there? Is it mandated in there? I don't know. Like, is there like a community board and there's parents and they make, they're like the governance board for each of the, it's required, right? But, but just for any improvement plan, right? Or is it just-
So, for the restructuring plan, it is required, is what you're saying? I just want to get that on the record. So that, so for the restructuring plan, yes, it is required to have parental involvement.
Okay. I have more questions, but go to other people, sorry, my bad.
Okay, Mr. Wayne, and then I'm going to, I'm going to go to Mr. Wayne, is that okay? Is that what you said? And then, and then I'll have one more call.
First of all, I want to publicly apologize to you because I got a call from an old mentor of mine who, last meeting when I said you copied, I didn't literally mean copy and paste, and that's how this person took it. So I wanted to make sure, that's not what I mean. I mean, we had the same plans, but I didn't see the results of student growth, not the actual you not doing a job. So, I will make sure I show this part of the film to that person so they know that I publicly apologized to you. Because that's not my intention.
Thank you.
And so I misspoke for that. But, the reason I really like when Mr. Vargas asks these questions, because this is kind of his area and it sparks questions for me, and I would really like a board workshop on this. I feel this is just as important as our bond. I feel this is just as important as anything else. In the late hours, I can ask my seven questions, eight questions. But if you want me to vote on something, I want my, I want my questions answered. And I really want to hear what else Mr. Vargas has to say. Like, for example, I didn't get to ask earlier, we know gold and silver schools, so that means we kind of know who the bottom three are, what additional resources. I know they talked about physical staff going there and helping out. But what money are we setting aside for our lowest performing schools to, to create new programs? And so those are just questions I want to ask. And being that it's 11:30, I don't know if we can have that long of a dialogue of how, how this works. Because in my four years on the board, I, we just didn't have this conversation. So this is still new to me. And so, I would like a board workshop before I vote on anything regarding this new area. And part of it is, some of the restructuring does require a new principal and 50 percent of teachers may be going somewhere else. I don't know what schools they are going to be or we've identified, I don't know how we do. But if, you know, Mrs. Johnson comes home and, or sends a kid home and they find out that they might be not there next year and they tell their kid and their parent, we get the phone call and I just don't know how that's going to work. I don't want to say, I don't know what school they are, I don't know how it works. I really want to be able to understand and give an answer that this school is going through restructuring and here's why. And this is a potential option and those kind of questions. And I just think at 11 o'clock, 11:30, I'm not going to get the answers. I need to make a full decision on that.
Can I also say that when you talk about applying for this kind of grant, as much as you request, when you're talking about resources for school, there also has to be a plan for sustainability in there. And we have to decide whether they're going to be one-time events or if we're going to bring on staff and how we're going to sustain that staff after the grant period is over.
And that goes to my question about the, the student improvement plans is like, we have plans, but is there a budget tied to that plan? And that goes back to my original question, you know, 10 percent poverty versus 90 percent poverty. Obviously, there's different plans, but we as a board and prioritizing, priority-based budgeting, are we saying our five lowest performing schools, not this year, but maybe next budget year, we're going to put $5 million aside and make sure that those principals have an additional, I'm just throwing out numbers, so don't hold me to it because 11:30. But I'm just saying, I mean, I hope people are trying to see what I'm saying. And so I just want to have that conversation and fully understand, because $666,000 is a lot of money to me. But in the grand scheme of a $500 million budget, I don't know what kind of impact that can have. And so, is it, do we disrupt the whole school for that money? Or can we help support that 600 and turn it into 2 million? And that's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out right now in my head and I can't really do it at 11:30 at night.
Ms. Williams?
So from, I guess my, my understanding about this, I, I agree with you, Mr. Wayne. I do think we need more information. However, my, my pause is possibly waiting to have the conversation. I mean, I think the motion would be more to, of our staff to start the application process and we can have more, more workshop-based. I would hate for us to put this off and then we could potentially miss the application deadline date. And that's just my worry. But I would, I mean, I think it's, you have a valid point. We do, we should have more conversation about this and what, you know, which schools we could be potentially looking at and what's the process and how, you know, I think those are, that's a valid conversation. But I would hate to prolong the conversation and then miss out on the opportunity and miss out on those grand dollars.
So, at this time, I'm going to, Mr. Evans has something he wants to say, so I'm going to turn it over to him for a minute.
Thank you, President Gotti. I appreciate the conversation because what we're looking for is direction in staff. We're willing to do whatever the board wants us to do. In our last board meeting, we kind of talked about multiple issues of, don't want to miss funding opportunities. We want to make sure we capture every resource for our young people, which is why we brought this back. Because I don't think we were, we weren't ready to make the decision on school improvement grants in that meeting either. And I'm okay with that if that's what the board wants. But it is a, it is a time-limited piece. It's very time-sensitive. It's a, I think it's the end of February, we have to have it all in. So, and then I think they get approval in April. So, we'd have to begin writing, begin meeting with staff and community for an identified school. And by the way, the identification is based on state assessment scores. And so we can, we can identify fairly easily the schools that would be more likely to be involved if the board wants us to do it. But the question is, are we comfortable with that timeline? It's a push. It'd be a push to create all those meetings. I'm not going to suggest it wouldn't. But on the other hand, if we, if we want to do that, I, I'm not going to say we can't do it either. I think we could try if that's, if that's the board's pleasure. We're willing to do that. And, and we would come back with some suggestions on that. I would like, if the board wants us to try to do that, some direction on which of the models you're thinking too. Because there are several different ones and I think staff would need that to kind of start putting together the plan that we're going to share and talk about and get input from parents, community, staff. I think that would be helpful for us with this. Because if we wait till the next meeting, well, I just don't know how we could put it all together. I really don't. Because that's now, we're now we're to February, February 2nd, is that our next meeting? So, Dr. Poole's smiling because he won't be here then. I saw that, I saw, it said February 2nd, he started smiling. So, that's, that's my concerns and thoughts, Madam President.
So, so I have just a couple of thoughts and then I'm going to go to Mrs. Fay. If we were to do small group work sessions next week to provide more information for individuals who wanted to hear more, that is something we'd be happy to put together. I think that if we wanted staff to get started, if, I'm going to call for a motion just because we need to make a decision on whether we're going to do this or not. And so, if it fails, so be it. If it doesn't, so be it. But I think we need to give staff some direction on whether or not they can accomplish that. I think a February 2nd timeframe is tight. So, I'm going to go to Mrs. Fay and then, then we'll go to a motion.
Thank you. And I, I would support giving staff that go ahead to start the application process, but with this caveat. And it's what I heard Mr. Evans say, we could try and we can need more direction from the board. And, and those, I see this as part of a overall plan for improving our lowest performing schools. And so making a decision in haste is just that. It's not a strategically thought-out way to take, okay, this is how we're going to take these schools. We've identified, I'll say, six schools that we can help with the SIG grant. And that's part of our bigger plan to help these five schools over here with this. And so, you know, I guess what I would say is if the staff can't come back to us and say, and I actually don't think we should as board members choose which one of these models. Because I don't feel like I have that expertise to do that. If, I would say if the, if the staff, to give them the go-ahead to explore it and start the process and if in that doing so, they go, you know what, we're not ready. We see this as something that we need to spend an entire year coming up with this a little bit more well-thought-out, more strategic, then we're going to halt it and come and revisit it in a few months or start working on something like. But on the other hand, if they go, you know what, there were three schools that jumped right at us, we see how it fits into the plan. This is the model we want to apply for, we're ready to go, we feel very confident and here's why, and they can present that to us, then I would be for it. So that's where I am.
So I'm looking for a motion to give staff direction, to come back to us, you know, to start the process, clearly for staff with their expertise to pick the model and the schools that we would be applying for. So is there, is there a motion?
I move to approve OPS staff starting the application process for the student, school improvement grant with the caveat that they would make a recommendation, recommendation to us and we will proceed from there.
May I ask a question and this might be unusual before you start? But what staff will I be able to find that will actually say, "We're ready to replace our principal?" "We're ready to replace our staff"? I mean, really, seriously.
Can you say the question again?
What staff, what school staff am I going to find that's going to say, "Oh, me, me first. Go ahead and replace me. Go ahead and replace my staff." I mean, because you're talking about the model and I don't think that they should have to self-select. If this is something that we want to go through-
I think it's direction for Mr. Evans. But, okay, wait a minute. Hold on. Okay, so we've got, Ms. Williams?
Did you get a second?
I did not get a second.
Second.
Second. Wait, no, who made the motion?
I did.
Ms. Williams made the motion. Mrs. Fay made a second. Now I'm going to Williams, Wayne, Vargas.
As we're considering this, again, you, you make a valid point, but it is more, I believe it's more direction for Mr. Evans. But the one thing that I would like to say is that any schools that the district identifies is that we have the conversation with our staff before we have the conversation at the board table. We talk a lot about transparency and so many other levels. And I would really hate for them to hear something that we didn't kind of put in front of them to say, "Hey, your school fits the criteria, you know, this potentially may, we may not select you, but this is the, you know, this is where you are and this is what fits this grant." So I guess that's more direction for Superintendent Evans to do that prior to a board conversation when we bring this back so that that staff at least is aware that there's potential conversation going on and that they're not blindsided by a board conversation.
Mr. Wayne?
That's really two questions that I have for Mr. Evans is, have we identified schools? And have we had any meetings at those schools regarding SIG improvement grants?
We've not identified any schools. I, we have met with Howard Kennedy staff and Wakanda staff regarding SIG. But have said that abundantly clear, in fact, Dr. Chisholm and Dr. Garnett were with me on, maybe both those meetings. The board has not made any decisions yet. But if your name's on that PowerPoint, and it is, and you're a potential, and if your NISA scores put you in that potential range, I feel like they should know that their name's on that PowerPoint. And especially not knowing what was going to happen tonight, because it doesn't look like you're going to make those kind of decisions tonight. But now I'll talk with more too, based on what I'm hearing tonight.
And then if, from direction back, and I said this about Howard Kennedy, I would like to know our lowest performing schools based off of the criteria for gold and silver. I know we talked to Howard Kennedy, but I'm still struggling with, we gave him a gold award, but we're talking SIG. So I'm still trying to figure that out. But that's sidebar.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know. But it's based on improvement. So oftentimes, you can still be at the bottom, but that particular year, you had 5 percent growth in three areas, which they did. But I understand what you're saying. It is, I understand that.
Mr. Vargas?
Yeah. So the first, I want to make sure there's a process to this. I know we've, we've had these conversations about transparency with the community and making sure people are clear. And then when that came up with other, other processes, like how are we choosing these schools? I mean, that are going to eventually, off the list, that are going to eventually take on which models? I think that transparency on the decision-making with you and a committee of people that we are saying that are doing it, maybe it's, you know, a cabinet of people, but that process, I think we need that if this is going to move forward. I'm actually comfortable with even wa- comfortable with even waiting, not only because, you know, you know, you've referenced Wallace Foundation many times with Principal Turnaround. I've referenced it a lot in my other work with School Turnaround, and it says, these types of planning takes a year. You know, we talked about, about a month and a half ago about creating like a vision for this, implementing a strategic plan, setting some more strategic goals, and I think we can and should do that, and maybe not hastily push it forward because there's a lot of money. Also, there's a lot of accountability tied to it. You know, we're gonna do the line item and the budget, the, the grant clearly states, the application must contain a budget for each of the three years, identifying the costs of implementing the specific intervention model in each school, which means we're gonna need to say exactly how we're spending that money, and if it's not, then, you know, we may have to end up paying it back. And if we don't use it all, that's also not cool. I mean, that's not gonna work, that's not good either. There's, there's consequences for that. I want us to take advantage of the money, but I don't think yet we have a plan to do that. And I understand while Howard Kennedy would is, would benefit from this, but as I voiced previously, I don't think that's a reason to push this either, because I don't think we have all of our ducks in the row on how this fits in with what we're trying to do in a strategic plan. I think there's more work that we have to do, and to your point, we also have to think about capacity. Part of the grant also delineates that you have to hire some person that's on staff for three years, some district manager of support implementation. You know, we have to think, and we have to do kind of a little mini-needs assessment on our ability to do this work. I mean, that's also what they ask us to do in the grant. I mean, that's asking a lot of you to do in three weeks. I think I'd rather, you know, set a motion that we create a strategic plan for how we're gonna approach school turnaround, and how we're gonna take advantage of SIG in the previous and upcoming year. I prefer to go down that road, route, than hastily put this forward.
Okay, there's a motion on the table in a second to give staff the direction to move forward on applying for the school improvement grant.
I know, I know, I know.
With the caveat that they'll come back to us with all the information. Was that it? Roll call, please.
Vargas?
No.
Wayne?
Williams?
Aye.
Fay? Gauding?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
No.
Underwood?
Aye.
Seven aye, three no. Can't be, sorry, it's, it is late.
Simple math.
Six aye.
It's okay. Motion, motion carries. So, we're gonna move now to J2B. This is, is that right? Am I there? Okay. So, there's a resolution in front of us on Pat McPherson's blog that he used, and so at this time, I will call on a motion to approve the resolution regarding post of State Board of Education member Pat McPherson.
I move to approve the resolution regarding post of State Board of Education member Pat McPherson.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Williams to approve the resolution regarding post by State Board of Education member Pat McPherson. There's a second by Ms. Underwood. I do wanna let everybody know that because we did put this on the agenda, just as a common courtesy and decency of, of letting someone know when we were gonna have something on the agenda related to them, I did ask Mr. Ray to let Mr. McPherson know that this would be on there. We showed the statement with him, and he did send an email back to all of us. He could not be present this evening. And so, that was all mailed out to all of you, just so you know that I think you've gotten that email. So, is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Snow?
I would like to recommend to strike the last two, the two first, the first two sentences and the last two sentences of the statement. I, in an example, the reason you wanna reason why.
Okay.
I'm not making a motion, I just, I'm just saying I would like to.
So, you'd like to ask for the motion?
I would like to ask for a motion to strike the first two sentences and the last two sentences of the statement.
So, Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams, all right, it was your motion, so are you open to that change?
I guess I would kinda defer to legal counsel, how, how that would impact the statement and our position as a entity.
Mr. Kramer?
It would have no impact. You, it is the decision of this Board what any part of it that they want or don't want to include. It's to your discretion entirely.
I am not going to accept the amendment, but I would be willing to withdraw my motion if you wanted to make the motion with those changes.
Mrs. Underwood, would you be willing to withdraw your second?
Yes.
So, there's a withdraw the motion, a withdraw the second?
So, I would make a motion for the Omaha Public School Board of Education statement striking the first two sentences and the last two sentences post, I can't read my name.
Okay.
State Board of Education member Pearson.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fay. So, a motion by Mr. Snow, second by Mrs. Fay. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah.
So, the sentences that were moved were, "The Board of Education of the Omaha Public Schools strongly believes in the protection of the exercise of free speech. Comments made over the past several years on the blog sponsored by State Board of Education member Pat McPherson deserve the same protection." So, that's been removed. And then also, let's see, "We are concerned that every future decision by Mr. McPherson will not be scrutinized for its merits, but rather, will be scrutinized, not for its merits, but rather for its animus. We hope that the comments on Mr. McPherson's blog and the growing reaction to them will serve as a teaching moment that helps our students and all of us understand that the words we post are allowed to be posted under our banner have meaning." So, those are the sentences that were struck. Is there any other comments?
Yeah, we were just discuss, the, so that'll leave us with the start of the paragraph with however, comma, "we also recognize."
So, the motion should probably, however, and also, "we recognize," you don't have to read it again. So, we're striking the words however, and also, as well. All right. There's no further discussion?
Ah, there is discussion.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Wayne?
I'm, I'm really struggling with this. I'm not gonna go into how racism affected my life, and how I'm adopted because of it, and all this long, drawn-out stuff, but the reason I'm, I'm concerned is, this is not the business of the Board. In your individual capacity as elected and community leader, you can endorse, not endorse, condemn, or not condemn any statement, but for a public body to take action in this regards, we are one step away from endorsing a candidate. If, if we, if a candidate runs for State Board and says racist things throughout his entire campaign, are we gonna come out and against that candidate? And if he gets elected, are we gonna ask him to resign? And, man, my big problem with this and why I'm struggling, and I know by the roll call, we called first, 'cause Vargas was la, just last time, the reason I'm struggling with this is that I submit to you that the institutional racism within our education system and within this city has more effect than what McPherson will say or do at this point. We have to look no farther than our strategic plan and our needs assessment. Where on page 27, it says, "When people had visited our room, classrooms, only 28% of our teachers had respect for unique differences in cultures." And what they talk about is that they went into a classroom for language arc lessons and was observed. The lesson involved reading the story about a soccer team. The characters in the story had names of Asian origin. The teacher directed the students to read out loud from the text and said, "Don't worry about pronouncing names. They are weird names." And then scanning the room, the observers found that many of the people in the class were from Asian descent, and the scan of the name tag show that these students have similar names to those in the story. On page 42 of our needs analysis, it says that African-Americans are disproportionately in special ed and suspension. And I went out on our website and looked at the data, and let me give you a realistic term. In one of our high schools, African-Americans are 26% of the student population, but 43% of the suspension, 67% of the mandatory reassignments, and 55% of the expulsion. In one of our middle schools, African-Americans are 18% of the total student population, but 38% of suspensions, 100% of mandatory reassignments, and 50% of expulsions. And it's not just high school and middle schools. In our elementary schools, K through 4, African-Americans at this particular school were 7%, but 75% of suspensions. We talk about alternative schools and alternative education. Based on that data alone, we are, we know as a district in our needs analysis that we are pushing African-American kids into special ed. Yet, our school, according to page 36, "Schools lack a comprehensive approach to identifying student needs of, of academic interventions and providing those interventions." We're not being very successful, yet we're steering kids towards special ed. When you look at Blackburn, and when I sit there in front of juvenile judges and district court judges, and they say a kid goes to Blackburn, I've had numerous judges remark that it is a prison pipeline. African-American students are 30% of our total student population, but yet they represent 75% of the kids at Blackburn. I submit that there is more that we can do about things that we control regarding racism, institutional racism in this school district than by making a statement on something we do not control. The report says that our transition rooms need to be revamped. They're not very effective, yet most of the kids are disproportionately African-American. We had a school meeting here talking about SROs, and we read in the paper about tickets, and we know from the data that I just read, and that's nationally, that those students are by and large disproportionately African-American. But we didn't, as a Board, direct Mr. Evans to say, no more police reports in our schools, that no more, unless a parent wants to file a police report, we're gonna stop it. We haven't gave a directive to lower suspension. We had a committee put together. I, we've asked numerous times for updates, not sure where it's at, but we're not overall, I mean, I kinda know where it's at, I've talked to Matt Ray a little bit more, but we're not overall focusing in on suspensions and discipline, which disproportionately affect African-Americans in our school district. So, yes, I condemned, as in my individual capacity, McPherson's statements. I asked for a resignation. But before we, as a governing body, say, we're gonna tell a man to resign for racism, let's focus on what we can control. Let's make a statement about what we can do, and say, no more ticketing young school, school people, no more going into schools and making arrests 'cause they have a warrant, no more when a fight breaks out, we're gonna send a police report to the Douglas County Attorney in charge of 7th grader with assault. Them are disproportionately affecting our kids and putting them in the juvenile justice system. And we all know it doesn't work. So, I'm struggling whether I wanna support this or not, not because I, I agree with his statements, but because the institutional racism that exists within our buildings, within our society, that affect Omaha Public Schools that we control, we haven't done enough about, but we're gonna stand up and say, resign. I want those people who send a black kid to suspension but doesn't do the same thing for a white kid disproportionate rate to resign. That's the statement I wanna make, and I hope this Board does. That has a far bigger impact. He's discredited now. Anything he pushes, people are gonna look through it with a different lens. He can't affect us. His own Board has spoke out against him. But we're gonna take an action, speaking out, ask him to resign before his own Board does? They can call a special meeting, they can ask him to resign. I just don't think it's our place right now. Maybe later after they do. But I also wanna deal with our own issues, our own racism, our own disproportionately policies that affect our kids. Just focus on what we control. Sorry for the speech.
Ms. Williams?
Well, I, however, reserved my right to speak as a, as a personal individual because I have experienced extreme racism and bigotry, and I won't have that conversation, as you said you would not. However, I've had a lot of communications, a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls, a lot of texts, a lot of stopping in the street to ask about particularly, why did some of your Board come out? Because that's a reflection of us. And I guess the thing for me is that I believe that we had, we, we kind of made a procedural ask to each other, that if we were gonna speak to media about whatever the issue is, that the rest of the, you would reach out to, we would reach out to the rest of the Board, so we wouldn't get blindsided. One, unfortunately, that communication didn't happen, and, and I'm okay with it. I mean, we are where we are, but the thing that I want to go on record to say is that, to my constituents, my comments were that I have reserved my personal comments until the Board presents its formal statement, which is soon to come. I believe that united front will have more significant impact than one, two, three, or four individual statements, and to have the Board discuss this issue will be more of a benefit on where the district stands. And, and my understanding is that the State Board is looking to us, because we are most impacted by this. And so, you know, as we move forward, we're gonna take whatever personal stances that we're going to take, but in my heart of hearts, I believe that we need to work on those types of communications so that we are at least lockstep. I do appreciate the fact that it was, you know, we didn't violate open meetings. I appreciate that. But to know as the minority woman sitting on this Board, that my colleagues didn't reach out to me, and that we could've stood, stood lockstep together on an issue and communicated with the Board. The only person that I know that I responded to was Mr. Snow about concern about this issue, and I do appreciate that, and, and that was something that I communicated with him, and I also talked to district staff, and, and we kind of went through this motion. But at some point, we have to make a stand, one way or the other. If we're going to be against it, then we need to, you're right, we do need to do something about it in our district, and I believe that that's part of the work that we did with the strategic plan, doing the needs analysis. There's more to happen, but as someone who has talked about race relations since I got on this Board, it's something that everybody knows that I'm passionate about, to have this conversation, and to have to bring it here to have this conversation. I'm disappointed. I'm not gonna take it personally, because this is the work that we're here to do, but if we're going to do something, and we're gonna be united, there's powers in the number, and I left Selma, watching Selma with my children, and to deal with this, and the thing that I took away from that is, there's power in numbers. If we are strategic, and we are aligned, and we make a statement, that has more power than one or two individuals making a, a statement. And so, that's, that's how I'm gonna leave that. We're all going to vote however we vote, if at all, but I, I want that to go on record. And it's courageous to stand and not make a statement when the pressure is on you, but that's not me as a person, and I'm not going to do that. I would rather take a stance, be united, and move forward with this. We do need to be more proactive than reactive, but I don't believe the process and, and having a Monday holiday, that hindered the process. But moving forward, I know that I will be working with President Gauding and anyone else to make sure that we are ahead of these things as they come out, and making sure that we are representing our district. What we all do in our personal lives is just that, our personal lives.
Ms. America, and then Mr. Snow.
Um, I just wanted to touch on something that
I just wanted to touch on something that was said earlier, and that was also sent to our board earlier, and that's the fact that I see this as a completely different situation than our board endorsing or not endorsing a candidate. The person this involves is an elected official that represents OPS. They are essentially a voice for our district on the State Board of Education, and I think because of that, it is a situation where we, as a board, should say something as a unified voice. It's not like we're saying, "Oh, these two people are running, we don't agree with this one." We're saying, "This person represents us as a district at a higher level of government, and that's something that we should have a united position on."
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just make it pretty brief. I apologize, Ms. Williams, that you feel that way, but one thirty-second second sum up mine. When this was initially brought up, I thought I had a conversation with someone, and they said that was going to happen, and I was, I had people from my district and my community, as you have as well, that came in the meeting and said, "What is going on? What are you guys doing about it?" And it's like, I didn't feel that I was getting that reaction fast enough. So by time I got together with others and we said we were going to do this, I walked into the lunch meeting, and that's when I was informed, and I checked my email. But instead, we talked about communication, but that's something we need to work on as a whole, and I agree. I mean, I could tell you I made recommendations to this and it got ignored, but that's another thing. But we need to work together. Thank you.
I just, Mr. Snow, and I just, it's not, I mean, that's just how I personally feel, good, bad, or indifferent. I appreciate your comments. That makes, you know, I understand that, and that's a part of this job, and that's a part of our role. And we can have other conversations as we move forward, but it doesn't negate the fact that, you know, I can only speak for myself. I did feel blindsided with this, and, you know, personally, you, we all, again, we all have the voice to say whatever we need to say personally, but in this issue, I didn't want to make that mistake of speaking from my heart, which was going to be very heavy. And so I felt that it was better to represent my constituents this way, and the responses that I got from them time and time again was, "We appreciate your response, and we understand your logical process of doing that," and that was the end of that. And I haven't had anything else come in after that.
Mr. Vargas, and then we'll wrap it up.
I think this is somewhat in response to many people's reactions to this. Outside of the communication, I still, I'm worried about what, again, the precedent we're setting and what we haven't done, taking harder stances on things or that even constituents have brought up around, you know, "We would like you to make a stance on this with, you know, standards-based grading," you know, with, there's a whole, there's a whole litany of things that we haven't created, you know, a response to that I think we should be doing. And that's more internal to what, so I understand the logic behind there, an elected official, they represent us, but why is this inciting more rage in us than when it happens in our own backyard, and why are we not creating more statements around that? I think our district does a fantastic job of responding tactically to improve things, but we're not always making statements when we are, you know, you know, creating systems that, of inequity, or not directly addressing some of the institutional racism that exists within, you know, some of our schools that we are trying to address. I think that the big issue for me is, if we vote on this, are we going to come back and then now for every single thing that comes to us that has to do with race or class that is impacting students in our district, are we going to react unified and react in the same way? If the sentiment is that that's what we do, then that's great, and we build more communication around it. But if we don't, I'm worried, because then we're saying that something that somebody else says that's, you know, three degrees away from us or two degrees away from us from our schools, when we're not making that same statement when things happen in our own backyard, that concerns me. That's why this is hard, it's hard for me. And that's also why I think that this is, as a political body, elected officials, appointed official, I think it is tricky precedent to then go and say, "We stand for this," when this is not a board policy, this is not an OPS official, a hire, an employee, this is not somebody else on the board, in our board, it seems removed, and because of that, it's concerning. It puts me in a really weird feeling.
Mr. Scanlon.
I would just like to say, to just let the board know where I'm coming from. I think the comments that he made were completely inappropriate. I don't think that's the discussion. I think everybody can come to an agreement on that. You know, many of us have family and friends that are biracial, that, you know, we see, we don't see any, you know, we see them as human beings, as people, and a lot of us kept personal comments from the public, and I commend those people that did. I guess my perspective, having been in the military, coming from the military background, you have a chain of command. In the public offices, you have a hierarchy of public office. And currently, those people that are in those higher public offices than the Nebraska State Board of Education, like the governor, like a US Senator, some state senators, the Omaha chapter and Lincoln chapter of the NAACP, the Omaha World Herald, have all condemned and called for the resignation. It's one of those things that we have to work with the Nebraska State Board of Education. They do have jurisdiction over us, and I would find it difficult, when they have not come out, to overwhelmingly call for his resignation, to jump into that fray and to take that step in the sense that, yes, we have a lot of students that fall into the category that he was insulting. However, it's one of those that, you know, in the military, you don't publicly criticize your commanding officer or those officers above you. You would hope that the system would take care of itself, and those higher ranking officers would take care of that. And in this case, I believe that the higher level of public office, those officials are addressing this situation. I think that it could possibly harm a future working relationship because there is no, the only thing that is standing, or McPherson, he would have to resign himself. There's no other mechanism to remove him from his position, and I think that if we were to make a public statement, that that could cause a thorn in his side and possibly cause trouble down the road for us as a school district, holding a grudge. Whether that were to happen or not, I don't know. I am disappointed by the actions of the members that went out and made a public statement. I think that undermined the solidarity of the board. I'm disappointed in that. I don't believe that enough time was given to the newly-elected board officers to properly address the situation, so I think there was a lot of things that did not go as they should have. I guess at this point, I personally cannot, cannot support a statement where we are condemning somebody that is in higher office that oversees, oversees portions of our, of the jurisdiction of OPS, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, Lacey, one more comment.
Now, I agree with like ninety percent of what you said, except for a couple of things, and that, I know the state board hasn't had an official meeting, which is part of why they haven't taken a position, but multiple, I can't pull them up because we're not getting on the internet, multiple of the board members have been quoted as saying that it will be incredibly hard, not specifically saying, "I want him to resign," but saying, "It will be incredibly hard to work with this person, given this information," and things to that effect. So the majority of the state board has made that type of comment already.
Right, so with that, roll call, please.
Stay.
That's going to throw my math off again, but. Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
No.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Stay.
Abstention.
How's your mouth?
It's not, it's not really good right now. That's six aye, one no, and two abstentions.
All right, so with that motion carries, I think we're going to go ahead and on the second reading of the three thousand policies, just table that for the next meeting.
I move to approve.
Oh, you moved to approve?
Move to approve, second reading of the policies that were presented before us, and if I can, I'll make a second motion to wait, second reading if we already didn't. Oh, we did it that. I move to approve.
This is second meeting, so is there a second? Okay. Motion by Mr. Wayne, and second by, who made the second?
Williams.
Williams.
Williams. Is there any discussion?
Turning to page one, I got a question. I'm joking, I'm joking.
Oh, my gosh, trust him. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Motion carries. You have some receipt of reports. Also at your table is the capital improvement bond program information, if you didn't make it to the work session, this was really good information, points of pride, and a copy of the strategic plan, and then a couple of receipt of reports.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, legal counsel, Dr. Turnquist, and Scott Dye, real estate personnel and negotiations.
Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with superintendent, secretary to the board, legal counsel, Dr. Turnquist, and Scott Dye, real estate personnel and negotiations. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at twelve seventeen AM.
I just want to say for the record, this is the longest meeting Dr. Poole ever been to, so eighteen years. We set the record tonight for him on his last time.
The way in, we need to vote, to go into closed session. I'm sorry, roll call, please. Oh, we need a second. That's right.
Can I get a second?
Second by Ms. America, roll call.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Is it my turn? I don't know.
Scanlon. Sorry. Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight aye, one abstention.
It was a nice last meeting, right?
Hey, do me a favor for me, would you? Come on, you was right, I know you got hired before.
What was it for?
Yeah, I broke the dates, and I just didn't, I wanted to bounce them off my calendar.